I hear something.
It was just the microphone. It's, it's fine.
We're fine, are we? Just funny. So I'd like to call order this special meeting November 30th through 2017. Katie, would you call roll, please?
Seaverton.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Kifer.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Kooz.
Yes.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bring this down to communications. We have some laid on the table. Number one is the fire department apparatus spreadsheet. Number two, sitting center firearm arm. Number three, a list of position vacancies. Number four, modification of museum and port budget that will require a motion later. Number five, law department contractual services. Number six, new leading to museums, CIPs. Number seven, revised funding source for museums, CPV funds. So that brings us down to persons to be heard. Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak?
I guess so then.
Ah, yeah, okay. Come on up, identify yourself.
Hi guys, my name's Billy Singleton. I'm covering the city council for the Catch a Man Daily News. And since I'll be writing about you guys and talking, talking to you, trying to ask you questions and stuff, just figured I'd take a second to introduce myself.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Now I know what he looks like.
So that brings us on to unpenetrable business, the resolution number 172679, adopting the budget for the year 2018. We left off on J1. Everybody on track? There you go, okay. Anything on J1? Bring this down to J2. This is the funding sources. And this is first where, where we've been speaking about the leasing finance of 2018. We come down to C3.
J3.
Are J3, excuse me?
I was about to jump back about that.
Yeah, we go back a way.
Actually, I do.
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, this one's for Carl, I guess, for Bob. Um, so, actually, right now, do we take a certain portion of CPV funding and use it for, for the extra services we provide during the summer for visitors or not?
No. And one of the reasons why is the port pays a payment in lieu of taxes. And that payment in lieu of taxes is intended to defray general government expenses.
Someone asked me, said, "Why aren't you charging them?" And I said, "Well, because they'd be suing us."
Okay, J3 shows the department layout, goals for 2018. Down to J4, accomplishments. Writing the good end summaries. Okay, J5. Yes.
Under operating supplies, I see that there was some recently recalled firefighting foam. And that's, so we have an increase in that portion of the budget. This recalled foam, do we have to pay for that or is it replaced at no charge for the defective product?
Evan Hope Fire Chief. And the foam that was recalled was not recalled by the manufacturer, so they are not replacing it. And it's many years old, but it's been found to have certain carcinogens and DEC is the one who recalled that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that, Mark. Bring this down to D5. There it talks about, or J5. It talks about the operating budget changes to 2018. Now I get there.
I can't see it either.
Any questions on that page? J6. List of cost of personal services, supplies, that type of stuff. J7. On J7, 50201, temporary wages. This account provides for the compensation paid to temporary employee. Do these employees come out of the volunteers? That what we do with those?
Yes, sir. That includes the stipends for the volunteers as well as any temporary backfills that we may need throughout the year.
Yep.
Chief, um, the postage line item, I tried to pick a unit, but I'm just curious why, why you're anticipating it to jump, you know, 35, 40% this year?
We, um, when we ship items, in the past, we weren't charging those to that, that shipping and postage line item. And I've been charging those to that, that line item so that we can keep track of what our shipping is actually costing us.
Thank you. Anything else? Moves this on to J8. Noted there that 51501 is vehicle maintenance. We're only looking at about, what, 1,500 bucks? And then machinery and equipment maintenance materials, it's about 8,000, so. It's not a lot of maintenance materials when you look at them. Goes on to J9. J10.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
Um, on 64504, ransom, no, no, 64501, ransom leases that we pay for space at fire station number three. So is that just an exchange between the city and the borough? We send them that money for space that we're renting from fire station number three? Is that right?
We lease that property from the state of Alaska.
Oh. And it's only $6,000 annually?
Yes.
Can we say more property?
Maybe, we could check.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
It's a good price.
Is that part of the front right away, the road right away or what property?
No, the station three property and building, where the station three building is at, out by Thamesco.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Come down to J11. Grant program. J12. Brings us to J13. There's some of the grant programs written on the graph. J14. So this is where we get into the vehicle movement equipment and we start talking about the apparatus replacement plan. So I guess we could, we could talk about the idea of the lease and how that was going to work here or we can wait until we get into the capital budget.
About now?
About now, okay. So, I have a couple of concerns and of course not looking at knowing what all the lease language is. That's all sales tax money and you're looking at putting about $400,000 a year into a single department for seven years. We don't have a lot of sales tax money to work with. And so, and it's a lot of money. And so then, I started looking at whether refurbishing would fit into the realm of what we could do to reduce our costs over the long term and yet still meet the needs of the community and of the department. Because we do want to have quality apparatuses that serve the community well. So I started researching some of that and then I asked Mark to help me out with it a little bit. And so councilman Flora made some calls too. And I think there's enough information that we should look at it as an option. Mark, if you would expound a little bit on some of the information you.
So councilmember Seaverton asked me to call one vendor that he found, it's called Fire Trucks Unlimited, down in Nevada, in Henderson, Nevada. And I talked to a gentleman named Richard Ives for about 10, 15 minutes. And I'll give you some highlights of the conversation that I had with him. He made a very good first impression. He was very straightforward. The information was concise. And actually, he started off with kind of a caveat. If, if we decide to go down this road, he goes, "The very first thing that we should look at is our insurance costs." Because the age of the equipment, if it's refurbished, obviously doesn't change. The build date is the build date. And our insurance company may penalize us a little bit if the vehicles go past X age. And I can't define the particular age. Other than that, I asked him, "Okay, so what's a qualifier for refurbishing equipment? How far back will you go?" They have fire departments requesting refurbishment of their 1947 apparatus presently. So these guys aren't afraid to look at any piece of equipment. One of the things I, I found in this conversation, or one bit of information he presented that was pretty interesting, was they will guarantee an equal service life from new. So if we have a piece of equipment that's 20 years old and we refurbish it, they will guarantee 20 more years of service. Their, on the back of a cocktail napkin formula, so to speak, was, "Go ahead and get your quote for new equipment." And it's, and he goes, he was very confident about this. It's 40%. So how can you tell me that you haven't seen our stuff? It's 40%. They've refurbished over 300 units. Their historical average is 36 to 38%. You're up there in Alaska, it's gonna, it might be a little bit more. So you come up with your figure on new equipment and take 60% off of that price. The scope of work that they do brings the apparatus up to today's standards for lighting pumps. I'm not an expert on fire equipment, but the equipment is completely up to date and as current as if we were to purchase new. And they can do everything, including frame repairs if needed. They have a piece of equipment down there now from a place that gets more rust than us. So there, there isn't any scope of work that is a disqualifier. "Oh, we can't fix that, so go buy, go buy a new one." That, that doesn't happen, according to this gentleman. The 40% also includes, by the way, transportation to and from and an onsite audit if needed. Because one of the things I asked him was, "How much to, just give me a rough idea. So if you folks have to come up and audit our fleet to get a baseline on where our equipment's at, how much?" He goes, "We may not even need to do that. We'll send you a pre-inspection form for your folks to go through the steps of a preliminary inspection. They ask for very specific detailed photographs. Send that to us. That may be enough. If it's not, then the next step would be for these folks to come up and do their own onsite audit." I wish this was actually happening a little bit later. Matt Nuska, which he couldn't pronounce, has two fire trucks that arrived last week. So they've got two pieces of equipment down there right now, getting, getting completely refurbished. Based on this very preliminary conversation, I think this bears some really, really serious consideration. You know, we sit here, we go through this stuff page by page and it's really hard to find significant savings. And I think councilmember Seaverton may be on to one. Looks like the Los Angeles Fire Department is doing some activities like this. And I just gotta think that their, their equipment's rolling a lot longer and harder than, than our stuff up here. And that's basically what I was able to ascertain so far.
I guess I'd be curious to know what the, you know, how many years of refurbishment buys us? You know, 10 years, 15?
Whatever the life of the, if, if we have a piece of equipment that's 20 years old and they refurbish it, they guarantee 20 years. If it's 17 years old, they guarantee 17. They match the, the, the in-service date to date of time to refurbish equals double.
So if they were to break down, they, they fix it?
They guarantee the service life. I, I didn't ask that question. So I, I've, I've got to think in a practical sense, there's not going to be a 20-year or a 17-year warranty on every single thing, right? Consumables, you know, tires, brakes, oil, belts, hoses, things like that are general maintenance and that's going to be the responsibility of the city. Whether it's new or refurbished, those costs are already built into our maintenance budget.
But the main components that are most.
The main components, they guarantee, they guarantee the service life to be equal to the life of the brand-new vehicle.
So, from their website, they say they give the rebuild a full one-year warranty and they pass on all the warranties of the equipment that they install. So they're putting new valves in, new pumps in, or something like that. You get the manufacturer's warranty on them, just like you would on a new vehicle.
Have we talked to any of the other places that have had them do that work, just to get an idea?
This is very preliminary at this point.
No, and I think references, that's why I was hoping that Matt Nuska had already been through the entirety of the process. Because, like I said, this gentleman made a very good first impression, real straightforward. But really, speaking to some end-users would be definitely a big part of this process to find out, you know. And, and hopefully, we could find some that did it four or five years ago, not last month. We want to find somebody that's done this a while back and see what they thought of the result. And councilmember Seaverton did point this out to me. This was a company that, that he forwarded me this information. This is just one company that I spoke with. There are more than one, so there would still be a significant amount of due diligence to do before deciding which is the best way for the city to go. But we should dig in pretty hard on this one and turn over all the rocks.
In other related articles, as I've looking at refurbishing by a new, refurbishing doesn't necessarily replace having to buy something because it's not feasible to resurface it, put in service, and you shouldn't do that. But in the economy that's going on all over the United States, a lot of the larger fire divisions have put refurbishing as part of their capital plan and replacement. In other words, they, they at least go through the vehicle once before they probably go through a replacement process. But as I talked about the city of Los Angeles, they, their units are six years or 90,000 miles, whichever comes first. So their call volume is so much larger than what we have. When you look at the list of vehicles that we were provided, very low hours, very rebuildable, I would think, with a lot of the components not necessarily needing replacing, but updating. So I guess the question, Carl, if, if we were to move forward or want to look at this, I don't want to necessarily derail what we have in the budget at this particular point. I just probably kind of look for a way that we move forward so we can maybe go down both paths at the same time.
I think if the council wants to give that direction and just leave the numbers intact, we can look at the refurbishment option and bring you back our recommendations relative to how that would fit in versus lease. And we'll, we'll prepare that type of report after the first of the year and bring back, you know, our findings. And we'll present a report to council. And if the direction is to go refurbishment on certain vehicles, we can do that. If in your judgment, there may be vehicles that are more appropriate to do a lease purchase. You know, one doesn't preclude the other. It can be a combination. It can all be refurbishment, you know, whatever the council decides. I just don't think you're in a, in a position to try to modify the numbers in the budget right now because we really haven't a basis to do that. So if council wants to direct, and that's what I'm hearing, that you want us to look at the refurbishment option, we will do that and then we'll bring back a comprehensive report for your, your review and judgment after the first of the year.
Okay. And one of the reasons that I, this stuck out to me, again, this is sales tax money and they're talking, I think the first year is 300 and some thousand, but for the next six years after, it's 400 and some thousand dollars to levelize at least on, on that amount of money. Whereas if you're thinking that a refurbish is at 40% of the actual cost and you look at the vehicle cost in here, you can refurbish a vehicle every year for less money. And so you expand, well, if you spend 40% of that, you're probably spending a million rather than a mil, uh, two and a half million in a seven-year period and you get seven vehicles that are, whatever the number of vehicles are. Yes, Dick?
Yeah, I, I think we do need to look at this refurbishing pretty hard and pretty fairly. If we do this, the lease type thing, I need to make sure who owns the equipment afterwards. Is it like buying a car and I pay off my loan? Is it ours or is it something they get back? I don't know what the conditions on this lease is going to be. So we need to understand what it is we're buying if we, if we do go for lease. The other thing, and I, I mentioned this to Bob the other day, Bob Newell. When I was in the Forest Service, we had what we called a working capital fund. Every month I put in so many bucks for my vehicle and then I paid another amount per mile for ma, for probably gas, oil, and maintenance. At the end of the, what they considered the life of that vehicle, which was seven to 10 years, there was a pot of money there for me to buy a new vehicle, vehicle. And I don't know what it would take to get into that, but it means we're not digging in the budget every year, but we've got to lock down if we, if we retry that. You can't get in the pot because you mess it up, but it's got to be there for you when you buy it. So anyway, it's another thought out there, but it's something that may be more difficult to get into at some point in time in the beginning.
Thanks, Dick.
Question for the, for the chief. On the line item, major apparatus, apparatus replacement plan, the 2,500,000.
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
I'm sorry, J15.
Okay. Gotcha.
What units are, I, I, below, the units are identified, the ambulance, the pickup, major apparatus. But I have a chart here, which units is that in reference to?
It is, it is spelled out in the, the capital project sheet, but it is 764, 752, 757, 753, and 756.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before you go anywhere.
Yes.
I know that we, like, we tend to think vehicles run, we use up a vehicle more when we use it more, but when a vehicle isn't used as much, what's the wear and tear?
That, that can cause maintenance issues as well. Lack of use can cause maintenance issues, just like overuse can. The other issue that we run into, we'll often have low miles and we'll have more hours. Or the kind of use that it gets is, is harder on it than, you know, driving back and forth to work. So those are some of the considerations.
Thank you. And then, new versus refurbished, I'd just like to know, you're the, you're the guy in charge of all this stuff. What do you think?
Well, I, I've had several conversations with Bob and a couple other people and I think it's something we definitely should look at. As we look at how we're spending public funds, we need to make sure that we're spending it the right way. And I think it's a reasonable request for us to come back with, with a full proposal. I, I'm not familiar with the organization that, that you spoke to. If what they say they can do is true, that sounds pretty good. I'm a little skeptical and I think, you know, if it sounds too good to be true, maybe it is, but I'm absolutely willing to take a detailed look at it and bring back options.
Thank you.
So if you're going to go forward with that and do some research, Mark, would you might want to work with him on that so you can?
Yes, sir. Your back.
Okay, anything else?
So Bob, there's some questions I have on the renovation of station two, but maybe we can get into it when we get down to the capital project.
I think the capital budget has them fairly listed out by item, so that's probably a good place to do that.
Okay.
Anything else on J15? And I'll wait until we get to the capital budget also when we talk about the all warning signs.
Did we get a train?
That was in the capital budget last year.
Anything else on fire?
That's a new scenario.
Anything else on fire about J15?
Joe, one question, Bob, and maybe the chief can help me. I, in here when I was reading this earlier and I must not have marked it. The station to the north of town that apparently were leasing, you said, from the state, seemed like there was some, some significant cost to that. Was it communications or what was it? Or did I, did I read something that's not there?
Something in this year's budget for that?
It was in this budget here where I was reading something.
Nothing significant for station three that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Okay, any, any significant communications types of equipment or is it other things at one of the other stations?
Communications-wise, no.
Okay, I'll, I'll see if I can find it.
I think that if you look under capital budget, five years out, you're looking at replacing all the radio.
No, that wasn't, it wasn't that one there.
Big capital budget for that, I think.
It wasn't, I remember that one, but it wasn't that one. I'll, I'll find it and I'll, I'll bring it up.
Yeah, five years out for the radio.
Yeah.
All right. Brings us down to police. We do realize this is Joe's first shot at the budget, right?
Yes, sir, so that's why, that's why we were holding our powder in the, in the fire department. We'll, we'll, we'll allow these citizen police officers to take notice.
My twist.
All right, so we're on K1. Department executive summaries. Move down, K2. Funding sources. Bob, how does the, the money get into the US Marshall funds? There used to be a considerable amount of money in there. Has there been a way that we redirected that money?
The money comes in as forfeited assets are either ceded by the federal government and also believe the state has some involved in it as well. And they pass it on to us when the money is available, so we don't really have any control over the money. The money has to be used for a, a specific purpose and we have drawn down on it from time to time. The money is accounted for separately in. The money is accounted for separately in the Marshall fund. And if you look on page C one of the budget, you can see what the beginning fund balance is and so forth.
Okay, at one time I remember there was a considerable amount of money in there. It looks like it's been drawn down quite a bit.
I don't think there's been more than a couple hundred thousand dollars at any one given time. But now there's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in the fund.
Okay.
With nothing programmed to be spent for twenty eighteen.
Okay.
What are some of the things we could spend that money on? I'm sorry. What are some of the things we could spend that money on?
I'd have to go back and look at the grant documents. The book's about twenty or thirty pages long.
I'm sure it is.
I think some of the funds were used in our K nine program, if I remember right. We were allowed to use some of it in there.
The only thing I know that I can recall is you can't use the money to supplement your existing budget. It has to be forecaught outside of your budget.
Okay.
We didn't pound the planes. Get those drawings.
K three. Moving on, K four, with the department personnel.
Just one.
Yes.
I just wanted to mention the Citizens Academy. It's not on their accomplishment for two thousand seventeen. I didn't see it. And I think it's going real well. I've been to almost every class and it's so far a success in my opinion.
Thank you.
Two enthusiastic tasers up.
Yes.
She knows how to taser.
Tasers. It's all about those tasers.
K nine.
K nine?
No, let's just jump ahead. Z twenty-six, bingo.
I think my mind is further ahead than it should be.
Better ahead than it is.
No, I knew I needed to be kept awake, but.
So in regards to the budget changes, the idea of training and education, account number six hundred point oh three, and we gotta increase that by ten thousand, by eighty percent to offset what State of Alaska converted to send new employees to public safety training. So the state of Alaska is no longer covering the cost of sending new employees through the academy. So how was that all broken down, Joe?
I got an email, or excuse me, a memo from APSC back in July informing us that no longer would they be paying for the two-week academy. So when we hire officers, we're either looking to send them to a two-week refresher academy. These are officers that are already employed someplace else as officers and we bring them in and teach them state law at a two-week academy. They're no longer funding that. That has been passed on to municipalities. The rumor I'm hearing is soon we might have to be paying for the full academies, which are thirteen to fourteen weeks. At this point, they haven't given us notice of that, but they told us effective the end of this year, starting in eighteen, we would be paying for the two-week academies at twenty-five hundred dollars a person. So I budgeted ten thousand dollars extra this year to be used for that. I put in the travel training budget in that line item because I felt that we're best fit, but that was earmarked for new employees that we have to send to the two-week. Right now, we have two officers scheduled to go in February. Officer Nichols, I think you guys met him, from Fresno. And we've had an officer out on military leave for extensive time and we're gonna put him back through the refresher academy also. So a chunk of that is already spoken for for eighteen.
So if in the future we do end up having to pay for the full cost of the regular academy, what is that per employee? Any idea?
A whole lot. I'll be back talking to you again.
Yeah.
My guess is probably, I'm guessing, over ten thousand dollars.
Per employee?
Per employee. That would cover the room, board, and training for them. We'd still be on the hook for airfare, up and back. With the twenty-five hundred that they're charging us, we still are, like I said, we have to pay airfare back and forth and the twenty-five hundred would cover room, board, and training, so.
So if we go back to that U.S. Marshall fund, is there an organization that we can approach and request funds? To utilize those funds as part of?
I would work with Bob and determine exactly. The guidelines for that are pretty specific, so I'm not, I, since it's not a training item normally or budget item normally, maybe that's something we can work in there. I know we can use it for training. We brought in a couple different training groups over the last couple of years and we dipped into the Marshals fund for that. And so that's definitely something we could look at.
Even if it's a match, it would help to do better.
It would. The state obviously is pulling back on a lot of funding for us. So we used to be able to access some of the training funds that through APSC, those no longer exist. And now they're passing on cost to us.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Any other question? Thank you. Brings us down to K six. There it is, K seven. K nine. Brings us down to the E nine-one-one Central Communications Division on K ten. K eleven. K twelve will give you your operating budget changes, what's that in personnel looks like. So under the, Joe, under the contract purchased services, when you talk of travel, trading, or training education, are those individuals we're bringing into town?
I'm sorry, which line item is that?
That would be six hundred oh two and six hundred oh three on page K twelve.
That would be, we have a small amount of training dollars set aside if we wanna send dispatch supervisor out for some training or we send a dispatcher out to become a field training officer. We do bring training in for dispatch from time to time. Lastly, I think we sent one dispatcher out to become a field training officer. We probably need to send a couple more out to do that. So we try to work within those parameters to get some training for, we have eight dispatchers total. Turnover rate happens fairly often in dispatch, so we need people, more than one person in there that's trained to be a trainer. That's probably the critical one right now, yeah.
So in regards to your staff, are they on rotating shifts? Are they assigned to a static shift where it stays the same all the time?
No, they match the officer's schedule, which the officers and dispatchers all work twelve-hour shifts. There's four teams, four for officers, four teams of two for dispatchers. They do two months day shift, two months graveyards. They stay on their work week. They, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, I believe, is a work week and then every other Wednesday they flop back and forth or every other Sunday. I can't remember exactly, but it's four on, three off, three on and four off, and they match the officer's team. So at the beginning of the year, we try to craft the teams that'll be together for a year. We want our dispatchers and officers to get working well together, so we try to keep them together for a year, if we can. When vacancies happen, we have to move people around. That's the goal. We also use that money to pay for our EMD training for the dispatchers, emergency medical dispatching. We use AppCo is the company we use. There's a training process for that, which includes, we have to buy books for them and we've had an in-house instructor, but when we do this, sometimes we have to go through the company again to get part of the medical training. So that would come out of this also.
Thank you. K thirteen. Merit for that technical. K fourteen. Brings us to the next section on K fifteen, which is parking enforcement.
I have a question.
Yes.
So on the ADA parking issues that you've been addressing, where's some of the, just clarification?
We've had some concerns this last year about people with ADA placards parking and leaving their cars first-in periods of time. So we've been working, I've been calling up Anchorage, getting some guidelines. This winter, we're gonna try to get with Public Works and get some signage made to have the ADA spaces match the timeframe of the lots. If it's a seventy-two-hour lot, they can park there for seventy-two hours. Our municipal code allows up to twenty-four hours regardless of the time zone. So if you're in a two-hour parking zone, you can stay there up to twenty-four hours with an ADA placard. But some of the issues we're finding are they're staying in the, especially the designated parking spaces. They're staying there for three, four days in some places. So we wanna get those lots, those spaces turned over so everybody has the same equal access to them that they should. So we're trying to ease into that. We've already addressed some of the, some of the issues that we were having in loading zones earlier this summer and we kinda started correcting those. We started with a little warning phase and then enforcement. And like I said, this, before we really start doing the ADA spaces themselves, I'd like to get them posted so people understand what we're doing, the change that we're doing. It's, we've enforced it differently in the past. We need to kind of bring it up.
So what about working with like some of the private lots on enforcing law for ADA parking? Cause that's something that I've noticed.
We, in private parks, in private lots, we don't enforce any parking other than ADA. So if there's somebody pulling into a space without a placard, we will enforce that. The officers, if they're driving by and they see that, they will jump out and write a citation. If we get a complaint, we will go there and write a citation. Those are the only parking we do in private lots. Yeah.
Go to K sixteen. Anything there? K seventeen. I've seen in most of the departments rise in our telecommunications and I think that they're doing probably some new phone systems or?
This one was a director's election. We ended up purchasing a cellphone for her. For the amount of, she was using her personal cellphone and the amount of time she has to call dispatch for plate information, for owner information, for ticket information. I just didn't feel it was justified to make her use her own personal cellphone for that, so that would be the increase in the telecommunications. That's where we put that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
K eighteen. K nineteen will bring us to the grant programs. Do you see that general trend of those going away, grants?
Yes, especially at the state level. There's still some federal funding, I think, that's still out there, but it's getting tougher to find them. They've already withdrawn, we used to get, I believe, twenty-five hundred dollars a year for like a travel grant from APSC and that went away. So it is getting tighter, yeah.
So as not to vac, you know, work in a vacuum, is it, would it be who of us as a community to draft a note to them and just explain what that does to small communities in regards to them? Certainly wouldn't hurt, I think.
It wouldn't hurt. When I talked to, Bob drove this up at APSC, he was very eager to share that this was coming down from the legislature, that they're dipping into those funds and that's why it's getting passed on to the municipalities. And like I said, it's, I think it's gonna get worse before it gets better, so.
And I don't think it's just in public safety. I think we're gonna see that in a lot more areas and I just think that every chance that we get to make our concerns known, we should.
I would, yeah, absolutely agree.
Thank you. Brings us down to K twenty, which is giving the operating capital budget combined there. Pretty minor purchases. So we're still staying with the, what is it, the Expedition? Is that what you're buying?
Explorers, Ford Explorers.
Has there been a need for us to have a pickup in the fire department?
Police department, yes. We've actually talked.
What's the fire department?
Yeah, fire department, wherever we go.
We can borrow their pick.
He just, we're just two departments being in public safety.
Perfect. We have, we have talked about that. We, there is a need at times. We haven't, it hasn't been a pressing need yet, but we've looked at doing that. We might approach that down the road.
All right. I know a lot of departments have them because they have to haul bicycles and get stuff and do this and do that.
We, yeah, we end up going through, taking stuff up the landfill quite regular for disposal. Every time we do our physical agility testing for new employees, it's a ten or twelve-foot balance beam we make them run across and part of the physical agility. So usually somebody has to bring their truck in from home to take it over to Valley Park to do the test, so. Yeah, there's times we're doing, like I said, landfill runs or we're hauling stuff for the chili cook-off or we're hauling stuff for some event that we're putting on, so it might be nice eventually to have one.
So ninety, is that two explorers or?
Yes, yes. We jump on the state contract. They're delivered to Anchorage. The outfitting agency is right there, so they pick them up from the dealer, take them there, they outfit them for us, take them to the barge line, then they go to Seattle and then back up.
Nothing excites the council more than car prices, believe me. We will argue that point.
Oh, yes, I will.
Do the decals get put out at Anchorage or Seattle or do we use those here?
We do them here. I have a total blank graphic design.
Oh, yeah.
Out of the Carlin Air Building, I believe.
Pro.
What, yes?
Sign pro?
No.
The other one?
The other one. Yes. There's one that's in Carlin Air Building. I can't remember the name of it.
Oh, yeah.
Dispatch Graphics, I believe.
Dispatch.
Shane. Yeah, they've been doing them for us.
Okay.
They do a good job.
So anything else on police? Anything else? Moves us to L one, Public Health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go through that, a lot of negative numbers, especially with Captain. Go down to?
So I have a question.
Yes.
I guess I'm confused on the hospital sales tax fund and the negative, so. So they lost funding or? I'm just confused. I don't know.
Are you talking about the one million, eight hundred and seventy thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, what that, what we're doing is we're comparing the two thousand and eighteen budget with the two thousand and seventeen amount that we budgeted for. And the reason why it decreased is because we are almost done spending all of our bond proceeds for the hospital project.
Okay, okay, that's okay.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, L two, mission statement, goals, accomplishments. I have to say, when I read through the department's, um, goals, uh, all the departments are doing a lot of things and it's, every now and then I find something I didn't realize they did.
Yeah, he said, no idea.
So, uh, I need to compliment them for everything that they do. Okay. L three. Bring this down to L four. And we say there's no significant changes between the adopted budget two seventeen and the proposed two eighteen. Ain't flat. We get into the narrative on L five. L six. So under an L six, just as a general comment, again, the building and ground maintenance services. I kinda took a look at what we were doing with all the different buildings we own and stuff. We're probably spending about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year on ground services. And I didn't know if at some point in the future, would you better put it under one contract to get a better deal? Or if there's another way to look at that. And I don't know if it's growing, uh, if we're getting the services that we want, uh, and all those kinda things. But that was a pretty good chunk of money when we grouped them all together. Uh, and so it was just something I brought forward. I talked to Mark Gilson a little bit about it. But I, something we should keep track of because it's kinda broken in all eight different little budgets, but it's a substantial amount of money. Maybe more rock garden.
Zero skin, nothing, so we will have to deal with musking gardens.
L seven. L eight. Anything else on public health? And then that moves us on to the library. M one.
M?
Yeah, M one.
Yours is upset, not W, it's M one. Two, three, seven.
Okay. My eyes are-
Yes, go ahead.
I noticed a ten percent drop in outreach services.
Yes, that is primarily because we had a, a long-time employee, George Passley, um, who, um, resigned and, uh, uh, we have a new, um, person in that position.
Okay, simply, simply staffed.
Absolutely.
And the drop in library costs is basically because we're not paying for the, the position over there. I'm sorry, the, the UAS library cost.
Oh, UAS. Uh, UAS, uh, has some, uh, pretty significant changes in their staffing. So, um, currently, uh, that we are paying for a point six nine, uh, library assistant two and also out of UAS and then five percent of my salary. And, uh, uh, it used to be that the, um, uh, the head of the UAS library was, was a city employee. And, uh, they've completely reorganized and so, uh, there are UAS employees doing a lot of that work now.
Thank you. M two. M three. Like, what's the numbers for participation or people that have come to library? M four. M five. Again, that gives the personnel count. Some funding source information, expenditures, category. M six. M seven. M eight. So this is the outreach division on M nine. M ten. There, M eleven. Here in the second, M twelve. M thirteen. With the children's service division. And fourteen. And fifteen. And sixteen. And seventeen, there they talk about, uh, children's services and some of the operating budget changes.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So how's the TEG program going?
Oh, the TEG, TEG program's going great. Uh, we've got a really good, solid core of teen advisors. And they're preparing, they're starting to talk about the summer reading program for teens and, um, so, um, and Kelly Johnson's the coordinator and is doing a great job sort of keeping them focused and, uh, planning, so.
Thank you. M eighteen. And nineteen. M twenty.
I think it's worth mentioning, um, something on M twenty that's also on M four is their, their accomplishments that every staff member attended the Alaska Library Association Conference this year. And even though it was in Ketchikan, I mean, Southeast Conference is gonna be in Ketchikan next year. I hope to see all of you there, but that's pretty impressive.
Well, the travel costs were limited, so.
That's true. That was a great opportunity to do some training and so, so.
Yeah, that was great, all of you.
Yeah.
Just, just in general, under the accomplishments, um, I mostly just think you should, you should, you should make photocopies and send those to our friends on the borough assembly to remind them that, that lots of people in town, including their constituents, actually use the library.
Yes.
Cause I was hearing more rumblings from their, you know, why?
Which, cause I've almost, I've heard a lot of, I know that there's a lot more people using it cause they're shutting off the cable. Like I did twenty years ago, so. And making their kids read or, you know, they're renting movies or-
Absolutely, absolutely.
I love going up there, so it's like vacation.
Thank you.
Without leaving the island.
More of a staycation.
And forty-one. Thank you. M twenty-two. M twenty-three, move this into the UAS library division. M twenty-four. M twenty-five. M twenty-six. M twenty-seven. M twenty-eight. So, let's see what I had here. There was a, a fairly substantial increase in six fifty oh one telecommunications. It went up by seven, eight hundred bucks. And so I think that, I don't know how you guys anticipate with the, with two thousand and eighteen, you're gonna utilize that.
Oh, well, what I did, um, since this is my first year preparing the budget, is I looked at what the trend, um, uh, has been in the past few years and then I just projected that out, um, till two thousand and eighteen. So, um, it looks like we are, um, on target, um, uh, to spend about twenty-two thousand, um, uh, for, um, telecommunications, um, uh, this, this year. And so I, um, uh, just added, um, a small amount and then, um, uh, put that, that down as the budget figure.
So the majority of that increase already happened this year?
Yes.
Thank you. M twenty-nine. Okay, we're gonna go into M thirty, which is the grant program. Yes.
How does the children's summer learning program differentiate from the children's summer reading club?
Oh, well, actually, it's this past year, uh, the, um, children's services decided to, um, sort of, uh, expand the summer reading program, uh, to attract more children, um, who, uh, may not be quite so interested in reading, but, um, might be interested in learning in other ways. You know, sort of, um, uh, sort of going to a museum or, um, finding some other way of learning. So we just decided to sort of, um, uh, call it summer, a summer learning program so that it, uh, just isn't focused on reading, but focused on all kinds of learning.
Thank you. M thirty-one. That brings us out of the library. Anything else in the library before you move forward? Brings us into N one, museum. Thank you. Anything on N one? We do have, um, too late on the table. Uh, item number four. Is one of them. Let me take care of that. Budget update number four. Two thousand and eighteen general government operating capital budget update number four, proposed modification of museum and port department budget. There's a motion there. Yeah.
Remove the city council amend the two thousand and eighteen general government operating capital budget for the museum department by approving the carryover of ten thousand of the uncompleted public art capital project program for two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen and the port department by approving the addition of the berth for FD stand pipe capital project in the amount of seventeen thousand.
So Carl, what we're doing here is we're-
Give me a second.
Thank you. So we're just realigning, uh, funding sources?
For the museum, that's correct. For the port, this was a, the stand pipe project was a project that came to Steve's attention after the, the budget submitted and then pretty much put in final form and we couldn't get it in the initial draft. So the finance director recommended that it be handled this way and just adding it to the port department's capital budget for two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. Any questions? Katie, would you call the role?
Coos.
Yes.
Stingy?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
And we had one other that would need a motion. I think the other one would take place in the capital budget. Item number seven.
Six, six and seven.
Six and seven.
Actually, no, you're right, six and seven.
So let's go ahead and deal with six.
Six is a different department.
Six is tourism.
Tourism. Okay, so, your honor?
Yeah.
Remove the city council amend the two thousand and eighteen general government operating capital budget by modifying the portion of the appropriation we paid to CPV funds for the museum department's Tongise Historical Museum fire sprinkler and HVAC capital projects to reflect the results or certain effects that the projects are fully funded by the community facilities development fund, which results in a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar decrease in the two thousand and eighteen appropriation from the CPV fund and a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase in the community facilities development.
That's second. Move the second.
So I just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Just due to litigation that Juno's going through right now, how do we know this passes for our CPV funds?
Well, that, that's the intent of the motion. When we put the budgets together, I felt it was more than justified to do the stand pipe and the HVAC using CPV funds. That was before I became aware of the court filings that the industry brought in October, which really handled a point home that while I may be able to rationalize these in my own mind, I think for the benefit of the community and not trying to get industry, uh, at cross purposes with us, it's just better not to fund these particular projects using CPV funds. And that's why the recommendation is to fully fund them out of the community facilities development fund. Now, that fund, when it was originally established, its primary purpose was to help assist in three capital projects- Now, that fund, when it was originally established, its primary purpose was to help assist in three capital projects, that being the fire station, library, and museum. So, funding these two particular projects for the museum really fits within the original intent of that fund.
Okay. I was thinking we need to be careful going forward.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments? Please call a roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Seereton?
Yeah.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Pat Papper?
There is a second motion.
There is a second motion.
The second one.
It was hiding, it was a second.
It was hiding.
Your honor, unmove the City Council amend the two thousand and eighteen General Government Operating Capital Budget by modifying the twenty thousand dollar portion of funding from CPV funds and twenty thousand dollar portion from the Community Facilities Development Funds for the Museum Department's Public Art Capital Project to reflect that the project is fully funded by the Public Works Sales Tax Fund, which results in a twenty thousand dollar decrease in the two thousand and eighteen appropriation from the CPV fund, a twenty thousand dollar decrease in the two thousand and eighteen appropriation from the Community Facilities Development Fund, and a forty thousand dollar increase in the Public Works Sales Tax Fund.
Second.
Do you move the second session? Katie, would you please call a roll?
Bob, I got, I got a question for.
Yes.
This is for public art in the museum, is that right?
Either within the building or on the grounds. We have not made any determination on that yet.
Okay, and did I get the impression from somewhere, and I'm not tracking it here right now, that we're carrying ten thousand dollars over?
And that's how this number jives with that figure. You, you carried over ten thousand from two thousand seventeen, and you just did that by a previous motion, and what we proposed in the two thousand and eighteen budget was an appropriation of thirty thousand. So you add the ten and the thirty, we're recommending it be fully funded by Public Works Sales Tax Funds as opposed to CB, CPV or Community Facilities Development. So the rationale, again, is to get this kind of project away from CPV funds.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I agree with the CPV part of it. I guess my concern is, is that we're carrying ten thousand dollars because we didn't have time to do it, and we've added thirty to it. And because we're working on other things, and are we just gonna carry forty over next year?
I had that discussion with the museum director. As you'll know, when you get to tourism and economic development, we're removing two projects that we have had there for a couple of years, one being the Stamp Mill Exhibit, the other being the Spruce Mill Exhibit. And we're definitely not gonna be able to get to those two projects, given what we've got on our plate for two thousand and eighteen. But we think we can get the public art component if it's funded by the council.
Can you say this is for both inside and outside the building?
Hasn't been determined whether...
So we'll know whenever we try to spend money.
It'll all come back to the council for approval.
Okay. I, I guess since you mentioned the Stamp Mill and the Timber Mill project, I thought we were going out with probably a contractor to develop those two rather than impacting the museum. So I guess why delay?
Just because of the work that's gonna be involved to get those requests for proposals out, work with the contractor to get them done. The Museum Department has been out flat with the renovation of the building, as well as the development of the temporary exhibit. Now we have to do a new permanent exhibit as well as a new temporary exhibit, plus the HVAC project, plus the sprinkler system project. And if this motion is approved, public art, I've got no one else that I can put on trying to, to get those other two projects moving. I would very much like to see them done. I think they're important projects. But until we get over this hump with the museum, I just don't have the staff to dedicate to it.
Well, I figured the contractor would be pretty creative. It wouldn't take a big RFP that would be long.
Okay, let's discuss that when we get to that section. We got a motion on the floor in regard to just changing the funding around right now. Cause we're gonna come up again with that in the tourism section, I believe. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Call a roll, please.
Kiper?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Seereton?
Yes.
Kuz?
Okay.
Zingy?
Yes.
That brings us to item N-two. Item three, position, statement. M-four, or N-four, the accomplishments, a long list of them. N-five? N-six? The operating budget changes. N-seven? Energy narratives. N-eight? N-nine? N-ten?
Just one quick question. More than twenty-three percent increase for janitorial services.
So the increase in janitorial services was actually when we put out to bid last May. We were very unsatisfied with the previous contractor, in fact, had to re-clean after they would clean. So it was an increased expense, however, it was probably offset by the savings in staff time alone, redoing what the janitor had not done previously.
Thank you.
N-eleven? N-twelve? At the Historical Commission?
Just out of curiosity, since the renovations this last summer, what was the number of visitors?
It was actually consistent with what we had last summer. I think one of our biggest challenges was people would walk in the door and see a half-finished facility. And so then it was convincing them, no, we still have something fabulous to see over here. And so we're looking forward to this upcoming summer season where we don't have to, you know, continually educate people. I'm so sorry, this is your once-in-a-lifetime Alaska trip, and we're not ready for you.
Just tell them historically Alaska is always reinventing its...
Exactly, exactly.
That's our display here. That's our display here.
Well, I notice that you always have the videos running, so those seem to be real popular.
Absolutely, and we've been doing a lot of school field trips as well, which is bringing in more locals. So we've seen a lot more local traffic this year than in previous years, which is great.
Thank you. N-thirteen? N-fourteen?
Yeah, Bob, a couple of questions.
Yes.
Uh, one, the permanent exhibit, is that due to be ready for two thousand nineteen?
Two thousand eighteen.
What'll be ready for this year? Okay, good.
You will get an overview of that at the council meeting of the seventh. We're bringing that forward on the agenda that will go out tomorrow.
Okay, then the second question is, we, we continue to peck away with a lot of money improving the, the museum, like the sprinkler system and the HVAC, which things keep popping up. Can we get a list of what it is we're trying to do? I know that study that got done a couple of years ago by Whitley is there. And I, and we, I got the impression we're gonna kind of hold the line a little bit, but the line is on a fast uphill climb. So can we get an idea of what we're doing and what we're planning on doing?
We can do that.
Welcome to the centennial, buddy.
We're close, we're very close.
Well, on, on, I mean, I'm just trying to get an idea of where the, what money is we're looking at out there. I'm not saying we don't need to do it, it's a matter of when.
We will put that together for you, Councilmembers.
Quick, quick question. Sorry, sorry, back on N-twelve.
Yes.
How often does the Historical Commission meet?
Um, it has been inactive, especially since I've been pretending to be director for about a year and a half and have just started, uh, your December seventh meeting, you'll have two, um, new, well, one returning and one new member that will bring us up to the sixth minimum required to officially meet. So we are hoping to resurrect that and be useful again.
Thank you. Anything else on the museum? We'll have another shot at it in the capital budget. Great selection of words. Bring us to O-one, the Civic Center. And, uh, as you see there in the major capital outlays, and we talked about it either here or at the, I guess, the operating budget, but I figured I'd give you guys a little heads up. Mark, would you come up, uh, Mark and I talked a little bit about these major capital projects in regards to the fire sprinkler system, the doors, and, um, I asked him for some information. He did a very good job of going through and researching it, really getting the, the facts of what, what's gonna go on there. If you could kind of update us on where you're at with that, Mark?
Um, sure. So, Mark Hilson, Public Works Director. So this project started back, really in two thousand and sixteen, when it was pointed out that the fire doors were in need of repair or replacement. We looked at that, we had, uh, two different companies that specialize in that come up, give us prices, inspect the doors. We also found out through the fire marshal that the door wedges that we commonly see used to hold doors open were not per fire code. So, um, oh, I have more of those.
You have more of those?
Yeah.
We, we like sharing. We feel like we're being frugal.
Yeah, let me get up and say.
We do have some more. Yeah, so this, this project really grew out of the fire doors and into what's called door holders. So these door holders, if you need to operate your building with the doors open, they magnetically hold them open. Traditionally, they connect to the fire alarm panel. The fire alarm panel, uh, when it goes off, it would release the magnet, the door would close, meeting fire, uh, spread requirement for fire-rated walls. So in looking into it, we've researched quite a bit of different things. We found different door hold, hold openers and things like that. We have not been able to nail down prices on those exactly. But between the doors, the hold openers, and if we have to do a fire alarm panel upgrade to control the hold openers, um, if we have to do that, then, uh, we're gonna be into quite a bit of work, uh, running wires to the new hold openers and that sort of thing. The other part of this is if the hold openers don't have to go back to the fire alarm panel, they could be controlled by smoke detectors, and the smoke detectors would have to be hardwired. So there's a trade-off there in cost, right? So what we're gonna do is look at the most cost-effective way to do this and go from there.
Gage?
Okay, um, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure this is hitting you wrong or I'm just a stupid man or whatever, but you made it sound almost like, you know, automatically closing doors on a sinking ship. That doesn't sound like a wise thing. You've got, if you've got five hundred people, the, the doors all of a sudden come boom, were closed.
Right.
So I'm sure this is...
So basically, um, these are not doors that close and you can't open.
Okay.
So it's, it's basically trying to control, uh, spread of flame and smoke. So that's basically it. And the walls are constructed with a fire rating. So obviously, you know, you put all this effort into making sure flames don't spread through the walls. You don't want them spreading through another opening either.
Nick?
You're sure?
Yep.
Well, I might as well start with fire code. A bunch of people sitting back on the East Coast, changing rules every year and forcing them down our throat. And that bugs the devil out of me unless we're fixing something otherwise. Cause if I'm under, and, and you're gonna have to help me out a little bit, Mark.
Sure.
Those, the building was built, I don't know, what was it, ninety-seven, ninety-four, somewhere back in there, but...
Yeah, ninety-four.
Uh, I would suspect, whether they're fire code doors or not, we ought to be able to find out where they are. If they are, are we just, are we replacing them because they don't work no more? Are we replacing them because the fire code changed? And at some point in time, we've got to stop this stuff, and it's just like Bob's Gatsby things. Everybody changes the, changes the words, and all of a sudden, we, the local people, are stuck with increased costs, and they're not cheap. So I, I know you can't answer the question, but the big question is, can we find out, are those doors really fireproof? And do we need to take them out of there because they're no good and that they don't work? Cause I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna not speak out about this, changing these damn codes and, and us getting stuck with them.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I completely understand the frustration of, you know, codes changing and then potentially that driving an expensive upgrade. In this case, uh, the doors either, they, they have some issues. One of the issues is, um, that they were modified. So as the building was built and things kind of settled in, doors got trimmed, hardware got removed, that's a problem that triggers a new requirement for a door. The fire rating, uh, which you referred to, uh, Councilmember Kuz, is a stamp onto, onto the door. Some of those are missing, so you can't verify that the actual fire-rated door got installed in the first place. We would be willing to go back and see if our construction records could identify, you know, where did the door came, come from? And if there was any kind of shipping, uh, manifest or something that could prove that door got installed, then go back to the manufacturer and see if we could get a tag for it. But I don't hold out a lot of hope that we could actually do that. I think it's gonna be a pretty big effort to, to try to search something down from twenty-three years ago. But generally, that's the, that's the requirement. So when you modify the door, or if the, uh, you know, hardware was modified, or the door trimmed because it was sticking and you couldn't open it, that kicks you into a, to a new door, unfortunately. There is a process by which you can rerate the door, um, but that gets, that gets spendy too, and then you're stuck with an old door, um, that maybe isn't functioning properly anyway, so.
Well, if the doors are not working and need to be repaired, replaced, that's, like I say, it's one issue, but for somebody to, to bring up a new code, that's what, that's the part that really, really bothers me. And, yeah. Uh, so I, all I can say is, let's do it this the most cost-effective way. And we don't have to meet every code if, if we're not changing something.
Kelly?
So just on another note of that, if you do have five hundred people in the area, what, what is the evacuation process with those doors shut?
I've heard of it, Fire Chief, so, um, I answered that. I also did want to add and answer your, your question, the previous one, the, the... The the code has not changed. Those doors were installed as fire doors initially. Um, in most cases, it's due to disrepair that they need to be replaced. They're missing components of the doors that were originally there, um, and they're not functioning properly for various reasons, depending on which door you're looking at. So we're just repairing in that case the doors that were or replacing doors that were initially required to be there under the the same requirements of the code.
So now.
For that portion of the project.
Were those doors doing all this opening, closing by themselves in their in their initial installation?
The hold-open devices and and is a use issue. The fire code doesn't require hold-open devices. Uh, in the operation of the facility, there's a desire to have the doors open at different times and be held in that open position for various functions due to, um, people with disabilities and the difficulty in trying to move through those passageways. So the desire is to have those doors held open. If you want to hold those doors open, then you have to do it with a compliant device, which is what Mark was talking about, the hold-open devices that are connected and can close automatically without intervention by anyone in the case of a fire in order to stop the and limit the spread of smoke and fire. And so to answer Janice Lee's question, the, um, when those doors close, they're designed to open in the direction of egress with panic hardware. So if you're inside the the meeting space, the main ballroom there, those doors come closed and you're trying to get out, even if you get pushed against the door by people behind you, that door is gonna come open using the panic hardware, and that's how that hardware is designed to function. Does that answer the question that you have?
Well, I'm just thinking that if you're trying to get people out without someone getting hurt, um, what is the, what would be the, um, plan for some peo- I mean, most people are probably, there's gonna be people that'll hold the door.
Mm-hmm.
But in the case of so, you know, people, too many people panicking and nobody holds the door, is a po- those magnets, um, automatically released due to smoke or the alarm?
The magnets automatically release, and in some cases, they can be designed with a temporary delay to allow time for egress. That that would be determined during the design process exactly how those are gonna function. The fire code addresses all of those, um, circumstances, though. It considers egress and safe egress of the occupants. I mean, that's actually the main point of the of the fire code is to protect life as people are, um, exiting a building and and majority of the things in there are due to life safety reasons. So these types of features do protect life as well as property.
I'm just thinking of the number of staff versus the number of participants at an event and people holding the door open to get people out and the chaotic nature of something like that.
Right. And the the number of exits and all of those sorts of things are calculated based on the occupant load. You have to have a certain number of inches of doorway width for people to egress through and hallway width and all of that. So all of that is accounted for in there.
I guess one of one of my questions are is, moving forward, we should never trim or modify a door, especially a fire door, because it takes it out of compliance.
Right.
Right. Once you modify a fire door, it does take it out of compliance.
So if we have a door that's sticking, they're gonna have to take the whole frame out, replace, re- do whatever they have to do to the opening so they can put it back in so it doesn't stick.
There are some limits. These doors have been modified beyond what those limits allow for. Enough that the 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 cover is not sealing to the core anymore, or there's additional holes through the door that have have degraded the integrity of the door. Those sorts of modifications have taken place. Minor maintenance and and mounting and some of those things are actually accounted for in the manufacturer specifications, but what's taking place with these doors is beyond that.
And I know that, uh, Mark went through and made account of the actual doors that need the modification, because at first it was thirty-some doors, and I think you've narrowed that scope some.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's correct. We we looked at some doors and, um, a couple of those were were able to be, uh, repaired or not touched, and then we looked at the hold openers uh, pretty closely and worked with, uh, Alice and said, where do we really need these hold openers? Cause they could get pretty spendy too, um, when you're considering that you might have to run electric to everyone or at least low voltage wire to everyone. Uh, so we tried to limit those, uh, just to make this as cost-effective as possible.
So in our conversation, do I understand that the existing fire panel is full?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, the exist- existing fi- fire panel is full, so in other words, um, you can't make any more electrical connections to anything that needs to be controlled. Um, the best we could do, uh, in terms of not replacing the panel is potentially put a satellite panel in, um, but that's a, you know, really a design decision, uh, for later. Um, that is kind of, um, you know, duct taping the 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 system a little bit, um, but.
More extension cords.
Yeah, right, more extension cords. That's a good analogy. Um, so there's potential there. Um, but then we have, you know, a new satellite panel, an old main panel. It's may not be the best approach. Um, but for sure, to answer your question, the existing panel is is full.
And it's not UL listed?
Um, so the UL listing issue is related to, uh, remote door hold openers. So we researched this, trying to find all our options, and there's, um, remote door hold openers that, um, don't, uh, wire directly back to the fire alarm panel. They can actuate based on on the fire alarm sound. They could actuate based on loss of power. Um, but those particular devices are not UL listed. Um, the other issue is related to the panel, is that the panel has to be UL listed to control the hold openers. So, um, if the hold openers are wired to the panel, then the panel has to be UL listed to accept them. And, uh, at this point, we're not sure that panel is, uh, listed to accept them. Again, during design, we would flesh that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, is is there anything like a a wireless type signal that could go from one place and hit all of them?
Yeah, so, um, we we did look at at a wireless system. Um, and again, we found some that are actuated like based on the sound of of the fire alarm. Um, those are not UL listed, um, so we're not sure if those would be appropriate in this circumstance or not. It appears that the code, and maybe Abner, you could talk to this, um, it appears, though, that the code wants those actuated on a smoke alarm, so.
Well, there's actually several different options in the in the code when it comes to how those can be actuated for the release of the hold opens. Uh, unfortunately, we don't have all the details on what products are available and what cost at this point for those hold opener devices that may be available. So, um, we would, um, look at all the various options and look for the most cost-effective option. Each one is gonna have pros and cons. If you have to wire it back to the main panel, you have to upgrade the whole panel. If we're gonna use detection right at the door and not use the existing system, then the components may be cheaper, but wiring the electricity to it might be more expensive. So we need to, we need to actually take a closer look at the different options that the code gives us and make sure that we have the most cost-effective one when we bring the project back during the design phase for final authorization.
Thank you.
I guess, Your Honor, I just briefly, we probably argue against the sound activated one in there. Some of the bands might, can't sound like fire alarms.
I didn't know a song.
Especially not during divos and divas.
Thank you, Iceman.
I might actually challenge that one.
Oh, two? Goals, accomplishments. Civic Center. Oh, three? Oh, four. Budget changes. Again, there's another one of the ground maintenance issues that I got.
Maybe we should have adopt a grounds area. You know, like, everyone. Community participation. Adopt a section.
Oh, five. And there's. Oh, six?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just an observation that the library spends a fraction of their money on heat as all these others. I'm just noticing the library spent spends ten thousand dollars, and I know it's because of pellets. Maybe the others should consider going to pellets. Maybe the museum can't. The museum is more than four times the amount of the library in heating, but the Civic Center, three times the amount. And just looking down, the library's the cheapest heat. Maybe that's because of the pellet system they have.
Overall, the building is the same size?
Well, probably not, but I'm just thinking. Okay, probably not, but, um, that's that's a big difference. Ten thousand dollars compared to all the others. Forty-five thousand, thirty-four thousand, twenty-six thousand. Just just an observation.
Do we have an electric boiler in there? In the, are that oil fired? In the.
For the Civic Center?
No.
You were right. I'm sorry, the library's pellets.
Yeah, the li- well, and I think they also. Go ahead. Let's just talk about heat.
There's a lot of thought in the library and a lot of thinking and a lot of heat rising in.
Uh, yes, the library does have, um, the primary is the pellet boiler and the secondary is electric. Um, and, um, so we do supplement, um, uh, the pellet boiler with, um, uh, with the the electric. So that line in O and M, um, for, um, electric, um, a lot of that is heat.
Oh, got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
That explains a lot.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anything else that answers your question?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Oh, seven? Oh, eight? Oh, nine? So we'll go out of that and we'll come to the tourism and economic development. P one. Is that the one that we have here? So that would bring us to the, uh, budget update number six. And the recommend- recommended motion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm there to City Council amend the two thousand eighteen general government operating and capital budget by eliminating the two thousand eighteen tourism and economic development department's timber and wood products interpretive exhibit at Spruce Mill and Stamp Mill interpretive exhibit, capital projects in the amount of fifteen thousand and twenty-five thousand respectively.
Second. Been moved in seconds. Judy?
No, I think Carl explained it.
Dave?
Okay, um, I'm a little against this, and not because I don't understand that they're they're jammed over at the at the museum. They are. I I get that. Um, some of us, Mr. Kuz, among others, worked really hard to get this in the budget several years ago to get the museum focusing on on something that would commemorate the timber industry, on something that would help commemorate the 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 mining industry, which were very important to start to catch them and basically is forgotten today. I guess my fear is that if we let this get out of the budget now, guess what? It's not getting back in. It's dead. Despite weather, staff, and so therefore, I'm gonna vote against this because frankly, we worked too hard to get that in first place.
Bob, I I agree. We need to leave it in there, even if they don't get to it. They didn't get to it last year, so why worry about it? And did the, although the, uh, what it's being charged to needs to change probably from CVP. Although I think it's legitimate, maybe with what's going on in June, we need to put it somewhere else, but, uh, I I don't think we're gonna take it out of the budget. And I'll vote, I'm like, I'm with Dave. I'm gonna vote against it.
Carl?
If if the council wants to leave it in the budget, I'm fine with that, but I would agree with Councilmember Kuz. If if it is to stay, then I would recommend that, uh, both be taken out of CPV and put in the community facilities development fund. So that would be my recommendation.
How do you wanna handle it, guys?
So are we looking to move the fund so it's not CPV?
We can move, can we move an amendment?
Can we make an amendment to it? Yes.
Uh, I move to amend the motion to leave the two projects in but change the funding from, uh, P CBP to, uh, community projects or whatever.
Community facilities development.
Community facilities development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Moving second. Further discussion.
This is an amendment, no?
We're voting on amendment. Dave, don't roll.
Iceman?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Keifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Cage?
Yes.
And that would go on the main motion. Or do we need to? Amendment, period. Amendment, period. Okay, let's vote on the main motion then with the amendment. Dave?
So, can I clarify that?
This, just make sure.
The main motion is amended. The amendment changed the funding.
So we're keeping it in.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Cage?
Yes.
Iceman?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Keifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Looking at that. Moves this on to P one still.
Okay, I, can I just ask, so where was this project supposed to be going? Down on the spruce mill?
To be decided.
Yeah, yes.
To be decided.
Originally, the idea was there was the the, uh, timber thing was gonna be down the spruce mill, right, because obviously the spruce.
Right.
And the, uh, I think originally the idea was the the other one was going to be over on Creek Street somewhere, but it was still, it was it was pretty much up in the air.
P two? P three? Move this on to P four. Deal with those.
Can I ask you a question about what the parking development fund, or exactly how that works? Uh, the Economic and Parking Development Fund and how that pays for, um, is that from our, um, from our, um, tickets?
No. That was a fund, as I understand it, that was established at the time the spruce mill was being developed and as properties were taken out and were sold, the revenue came back to the city and the council decided to set up a Economic and Parking Development Fund.
That's correct. When the property was sold for four million dollars, the entire four million dollars was put into the Economic Development and Parking Fund. And, um, the council used it for different purposes over the years. Roughly, I think about a million dollars left in that fund.
Bob, is there any revenue source that replenishes that money?
No. So one time only, four million dollars to target, never yet.
Thank you. Nothing on P four. That'll move us out of that. Move us into public works engineering. We still have a lot of tendents when we get through, I think, that portion of it. And I bring you down to Q one. Bring you to the Q two. Q three is the mission statement. Over review of how the department's put together and goals for two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, Bob, comment?
Yes.
It seem like this is an issue for me every year, but it's the, it's the fee that the landfill, ports and harbors and other people pay for engineering for engineering services.
Q one under the funding sources?
Uh, maybe that's where it's at, but what I'm really looking for.
That's where it's at.
Is, is we know it's there, but some type of, I'll say, an annual work plan showing the projects that are gonna be done that they commit to those different departments to do and then an accomplishment report at the end of the year. Cause I can't track it. It all goes out there and things get done, I know they get done, but I, I'm gonna refer back to when you, you were there, the landfill. For years and years, there was money paid to do stuff up there and that billing maybe get done this year, I think. And you could've probably built it with the services provided. So anyway, just a, some type of a project outline of what's, we're committing the engineers to do for each of those departments.
That'd be a good idea to see them.
At a time, well.
Carl, Mark, you got an idea?
If it may change, I'm not saying it's gonna be ironclad, cause I know things change during the year, but at least ways when we're planning, there's something we're planning for.
Bob?
You know, I, I can tell you how we come up with the numbers, but, um, it's not tied to any specific project. It's tied to our estimate of how much, uh, staff time at the engineering department is going to be dedicated to working for those various, um, operations that are accounted for in those other funds. That I can tell you, but I can't tell you what, exactly what it is they're doing.
Yeah, and, and I know you've provided that in the past, of, of, you've got a percentage that you get to use, but, um, and some of it you probably can't nail to a project, but some of it, we know there's projects up there and I'll, and I'll refer again to the landfill building and some others, and, and I think we just need to make that commitment to those things and knowing that part of it's often space.
Carl?
We, we cannot give a definitive project work plan. I can identify projects that are spelled out in the CIP among those various funds. That this is what we're planning for next year. What between finance and the other departments, they try to come up with a guesstimate of hours that could be applied, uh, to those respective departments. But then to try to tie this all back throughout the course of a year, we, it's just.
Yeah, and, and one other thing too, is it's not just capital projects and services that are being provided. So for example, if engineering being asked to do some kind of survey work at the landfill or do some engineering for wastewater, it may or may not necessarily be tied to a capital project.
So then if you can't tell us where it's going, how do you know what to charge them?
Well, what we do is we estimate how much labor time is going to be dedicated. We identify each position in the engineering department and then we estimate this position, it's gonna spend ten percent of their time working for harbors. You know, five percent working for, you know, that's another department and it's based on a, an educated guess of the engineering, you know, division. And they take a look at the CIP that are out there, but they also take a look at some of the other services that they do or provide. It's, it's an educated guess. The downside is if we don't do it, then the general fund will pick up the tab one hundred percent.
Well, and that.
Or whatever we don't.
And I'm not arguing about, I don't like the way you do it, and I'm not arguing about the way the, the reason the money goes there. What I wanna do is, and I shouldn't refer back to the building to landfill, cause I know there's others. Ever since I've sat on this council, we've put money into that pot to do that billing up there and it, it's finally getting done.
But it's, it's no different than the landfill or the port being charged for services that finance or HR renders, and we, we do a calculation of that at the beginning of the year. But I have no idea, for instance, how many grievances may take place up at the landfill and what kind of hours HR may spend on solid waste issues as opposed to port issues as opposed to harbor issues or KPU issues.
Yeah.
We have to make some type of allocation for those services rendered by those departments to the various enterprise.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, there's, there's, like, for example, I'll, I'll use finance as an example, but we do the payroll for wastewater. But we're not gonna sit down and have our payroll coordinator keep track of how much time she spends doing wastewater payroll. Uh, the auditors come in and they audit the wastewater fund. Part of the audit, the, and part of our department, it gets allocated to the wastewater, but we're not gonna ask the auditors to break down. You know, the, the audit invoice tells us how much time they spend on the wastewater fund. So what we end up doing is an allocation, you know, based on direct labor and that's a, that's an acceptable method of doing it. There's other ways to do it, but direct labor works very easily.
The issue is not finance or the computers or personnel. The issue is when there's hard projects out there that we can see getting done. And I don't know why we couldn't take the capital project list and he, I'm not saying put a time against them, I'm saying if those are hard capital projects, somehow or other, we better be accounting for what it costs to do it up there, otherwise we don't know what it costs for a building. Because we've got, we've applied labor and engineering and everything else to them, but we don't know what, we don't know what those are worth. We're not accounting for some things.
Yeah. So I guess my question is, when we do have these projects, do we, do they keep track in some way of what our engineering costs are as opposed to P and D or, like, do we know how much?
You take a port project, for instance, let, let's just take one that we've identified, we know we have to do, the removal of the rock pinnacle.
Right.
We're not assessing any of Steve Corcoran's time against the cost of that project. We're not assessing my time. We're not assessing the finance department's time.
So we never really know what the real cost of a project is?
The costs we identify are the cost of the contract and the cost of any outside consultants that we bring on board specifically for those projects. But the indirect cost, you know, if Marx called in, like, when, when the ship hit, uh, the, berth three, you know, a whole bunch of people outside of harbors.
Right.
Assisted during that time, but a lot of indirect costs didn't get charged.
I guess the perfect example would be the discussion we just had a few minutes ago. We have Mark Knappner up here addressing, uh, an issue for the civic center. I mean, they're providing the service to another, another city department. So those are the kind of things we're trying to pick up. It'd be very challenging to try and, and keep time records for everything that we do. It'd be hard. I mean, we could probably make a, a rough estimate of what capital project you see in the, um, in our capital budget that the engineering department's going to be involved in, that, that possible, possibly to do that, that we've identified those projects. But there's more to it than just capital projects. There's other stuff that, that the departments do for each other.
We, we know that these indirect costs exist and the benefit is by assessing the harbor, the wastewater, the solid waste fund, the port, KPU enterprise for services rendered by engineering. The benefit by that is by assessing those other funds, you're mitigating the cost that the general fund would have to bear. And we could do a way and say, we're not gonna do any of these subsidies and, uh, the general fund will pick up all the engineering costs regardless of what they're doing. Well, you're gonna put an intense pressure on your tax levy, because right now, a lot of that cost is being mitigated by other funds.
No, I understand that. I just find it odd that we never know the real cost of a project. I mean, I understand how you're doing it, but just what I'm used to is people would track that time to a specific project. So you knew when you came to your board with this is the cost of the project, this was the cost of the project. But we have a lot of costs that we have to allow for, like your time and that we don't really know, and that's just what I'm, wanna make sure that I understood.
Given the fact that we've got so many different projects and so many different people working on those projects at any given time, I agree with Bob, it would be very, very challenging to try to track, track that.
But, but I do think we do a good job tracking any direct costs that's associated with the project.
Oh, I agree with that. Yeah.
The indirect cost, the administrative cost, that's a little bit more challenging to do, and even under general accounting principles, not all administrative costs should be assigned to, uh, to a capital project.
Thank you.
One more comment. An engineer designing a project is not over. It is not like Carl or you, Bob, being supervisors and taking care of stuff. Some of those people are assigned a specific thing to be done and we need to track that back to that project. Other parts of it, it's just, you're not, you're not, you won't be able to track probably a third of what I'm talking about. But there's some projects in there, we ought to know what the cost is. And, uh, I know it's easier to do it the way we're doing it.
Let, let me.
Done.
Let me, let me give one more example. The assistant public works director, Seth Brocki, is spending a considerable amount of his time working up on Water Street Trestle Number Two, just because of the city involvement and wanting to make sure the neighbors are looked after, that kinda thing. That's not our project. So how, how, a lot of that kind of activity goes on that's very indirect and, and that's what I'm trying to convey.
So we have a new rule program that has probably project numbers in it. And so in generalized terms, if we had a specific project, um, building, building A, and we decided that we wanted, uh, this engineer to, to work on building A, he could potentially just put the.
What we are doing now for, for projects that require us to track the labor and it works really well with our employees, but when you have a, a position and it's salaried, it's very, very difficult to do that. And a lot of salaried employees aren't normally, don't have their cost allocated to a project. So if you wanted to take an engineer, you'd have to take the salary for that time period and do it in terms of a percentage if you wanted to allocate it to the project. That can be a little bit cumbersome to, to do that. We did try that with one position a couple of years ago and it was a lot of work.
Okay.
Uh, we tried it with Morgan Berry's position and it would really, it was all time consuming.
Thank you. Any other thing else? Thank you, Bob. So that leads us to Q three. Mission statements. Goals. Goes to Q four. Accomplishments. Mentors by categories. Q five. Again, shows funding sources, full-time equivalent personnel. Q six, operating budget changes. Budget details. Q seven. Continuation of the budget details, then the narratives. Q eight. Q nine. Q ten brings us into engineering building inspection. Q eleven. Division summary. Q twelve, again, operating changes for that division. Q thirteen. Still in building inspections. Q fourteen. Q fifteen, give you administration building. Q sixteen.
One of those grounds and maintenance.
Yep, yep.
Favorite, favorite topic.
Q seventeen. Again, we have a, a situation in that building. It was, you know, designed years ago, it has windows and all that kinds of, but they never put any kind of air handling, air conditioner on there. I know that in the summer, that building gets extremely warm inside. Uh, they can't cool it down. There's not enough windows to open and, and they're looking at a, um, conservative way in order to do that. They're gonna use the, I think, the existing ductwork and, and add a conditioner to that to help, help with that. That, uh, on page seventeen, there's a replacement of vehicle there, the engineering, that's for thirty-five thousand dollars. You go into the capital project and I like Mark, he's a pretty, uh, uh, resourceful gentleman, so he, he tried to replace it three times and it's for a hundred and one thousand dollars in your, uh, capital sheet. Like, you were replacing it eighteen, nineteen and twenty-one, I think, so.
They're different vehicles.
Same vehicle.
One will get through.
Yeah, one will get through.
Well, we'll nail two of them and the third one will still slide through, so I think, I think, I like that. It's a ductman.
Yeah, yeah.
Frogger.
Anything on engineering? Anything more? We're past the hour nine. You guys are looking at me like you're done.
We are toast, you know.
We are toast.
Alright. So that will, Dean will pick it up on, uh, um.
The June twenty-fourth?
R one, which is the, the temporary, and that next meeting is when? Katie?
Monday.
Monday.
Do we move to June twenty-fourth or?
Yeah, we'll defer. What's that? Defer the meeting to the next.
And we have till when to get through this?
Two thousand and eighteen. It's so far off.
Yeah. So I need a, uh.
Two or questions ago, so.
I, I defer this until Monday and then I'm moving to the June. Second. Alright, I guess we can adjourn.